Open the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee meeting for Thursday, January 26th. If we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Introduction of members.
Jack Heath, student representative.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Phil Chaplin, Blackstone.
Aaron Vinoco, Millville. I was going that way.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Steve Tringalli, Millville.
Georgia Jarrett, Blackstone.
Thank you.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
One Cop Business Manager.
Thank you very much. And our report from our one student rep today.
It has been a slow couple of weeks coming back into January, and we obviously had our midterm exams, which takes away from the ability to do anything super special because we're all studying very hard, every single one of us. We all worked very hard on that, I promise. Stuko has a skate night, which is actually tonight, and they're going to be doing that from six to nine, or six to eight, which is down at the Boys and Girls Club, so there'll be students skating around and eating beats all night. The midterms went well. There weren't any issues reported with them that I've heard about, but that's expected. I wasn't there for four of my seven midterms, so I had to make those, making those up, and I have one to make up tomorrow morning, and otherwise I'll be complete. We had MLK Day on Monday, and then the other day there was an email that everybody got sent about somebody trying to fish our emails, so that was about the most interesting thing that happened in the past three weeks. Otherwise, everything's fine at school, and I'll get a sports update next week. I'll take a look at, or two weeks from now, actually, and I'll take a look at those standings and see if I have any good news for you.
Great.
All right.
Any questions for Jack? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you guys next summer.
And good luck tomorrow.
On that final.
On that final.
Anatomy, it won't be a problem.
There you go.
So confident.
Okay, and our first public forum, we will have another one a little later. And, okay. Consent agenda A, we have warrants, field trips, and minutes of meeting for January 12th. And it looks like we do have two field trips. Looking for a motion for the consent agenda A.
Consent agenda A.
Motion made by Jane. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we're actually going to move a part of the, unless there's an opposed, report of the superintendent, the approval of the transportation contract, since he's here and ready to go, which everyone did receive a copy of. The transportation bid. If you'd like to join us at the table.
Thank you. Would you like me to go through it?
Just want to let everyone know that Mr. Richard Labrie has been our consultant on this contract. Bus bids have been challenging across the state. There is usually just one bid returned, and that was our case. I would like, if at all, Mr. Labrie to take us through a quick review. Your report, and then up beside any questions from the committee we can ask.
This process actually started over a year ago. You recall that I came in and Ms. Cobb and I looked at your efficiencies last year and rerouted using Versitran, the software that the school district owns, and you were able to reduce two buses at that point, albeit, I believe, you put one bus back in at the start of the school year. So this has been an ongoing process for quite a while. When we started the bid process, the first thing we look at, obviously, is what you're doing in terms of transportation and why it's being done that way. And then, based on the needs of the district, we fashioned the specifications in such a way that we hope to attract competitive bids. We had a number of companies who requested and received specifications. I think there were 15 of them, and we had five companies that attended the bidders meeting, but only one submitted a bid. I've had occasion to speak to several of the other prospective bidders to ask why they did not bid, and they have varying reasons. One company said the contract was just too small for them to be able to mobilize and incur the capital cost for a contract this small. They didn't think that the return on their investment would be significant enough. Another indicated that, well, actually, they got the Barnstable contract, which is a large school district, large school bus contract, and they weren't looking for any additional work for next year, so they did not bid. And when we opened bids, we had a little sticker shock with the bid as it came in. While the two-tier price remained stagnant, the single-tier price went up dramatically. We questioned your vendor with regard to why the big increase, and he explained it to us, and we were able to negotiate a reduction in that cost by coupling the single-tier with special ed routes that the district was currently doing. And that brought the cost down significantly. Your regular transportation cost from the current year to the first year next year went up about 1.3 percent. Overall, the budget impact from the contract, the current contract to the current contract for next year for the same level of service went up 1.02 percent, and guaranteeing the contractor a 2.5 percent increase each year, or COLA, if COLA is higher. And when you look at the districts which have recently bid on page five of my recommendation, and you look down the list, the average increases from this year to next year are bordering around 12 percent. And the Department of Ed has sent out a survey to member districts. The results that they're getting are fairly significant, that many of the districts are complaining that not only are they only getting single bids on their contracts, but the bids are going up, the costs are going up extraordinarily high. And when you look at the list here, you'll see 28, 25 percent increases from one year to the next. We're having discussions with the Department of Ed with regard to thinking about bidding for school transportation on a regional basis as opposed to individual districts. This is especially significant, I think, for small districts and for rural school districts, with the idea being that if you bundle on a cooperative bid several school districts, you do a couple of things. One is that you make the current vendors have to bid against each other, so you force the competition. And secondly, you have a larger economy of scale that hopefully would attract other potential bidders.
Why can't that happen now? Is there a law?
I'm sorry?
Why can't that happen now?
It can, but it would have to be, right now it would have to be voluntary by the member school districts to get together in some type of an organization to do that. We're suggesting to the Department of Ed that they use the educational collaboratives, of which roughly 85 percent of the cities and towns in Massachusetts belong to one or more collaboratives. They have the organizational framework to do things on a regional basis. Several years ago, the Department of Ed did do an incentive for collaboratives to get into the special ed transportation business with the idea of doing transportation, especially out-of-district transportation, on a multi-district basis, which then would be cost shared with the members. Rhode Island did that several years ago by state mandate. The legislature mandated that as contracts came up for renewal, that they would roll over into the statewide system. We went to bid statewide for out-of-district special ed transportation, and the bids came in $1.7 million less than the current cost before we even ran a bus. And their first student was the incumbent. They had 70 percent of the school districts in Rhode Island, and they reduced their cost to pick up the other 30 percent, and they're still there today. So the bottom line is that when you look at your cost increase and you look at your budget impact, I can tell you that this is a very favorable contract. The other part of that is not only do you look at the cost of the contract, but you look at the quality of service being provided. And in this case, there was no question right from the very beginning that your current contractor has been providing excellent service to the district. So from my perspective, you've got the right contractor at a good price.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Labrie? You mentioned that we cut two buses and we put one back in. I'm just curious, does anyone else in the committee know that we did that? I know we cut two. I did not know we put another one back into service.
What did you say, you cut from June till September?
Last year, we used the software we bought, and I knew we had eliminated two buses. When did we put one back into the route?
By mass, a big bus, an 83-seat bus only, is designed for 55 students, so by mass, we just cannot cut two buses at the beginning of the school year.
So we never did cut two buses?
We cut one bus. But by extended the fifth-year contract, we did save some money.
And we eliminated a wheelchair van, a wheelchair bus, because we leased one?
Yes.
Is there a wheelchair bus in this contract?
No. For special ed in district, it's only three mini buses.
Okay. And you mentioned that you were able to negotiate that 45 percent increase back down by negotiating special ed transportation. Does that mean we're not using the van pool anymore? Or is that a different?
No. When the contractor did his figure for his single-tier buses, he was not guaranteed being able to couple that with a special ed run. Now we've guaranteed that the special ed run that is being coupled with the single-tier this year will continue, and he was able to reduce his cost because he now spreads his overhead over two routes instead of a single route. That's basically what he did.
So is that affecting a mini bus or are large buses?
It reduces the cost on your large bus.
Can you just explain for all of us the difference between a two-tier and a one-tier?
Yeah. The single-tier does one school level. The two-tier does two school levels.
So that'd be like an elementary run, and then middle and high schools combined as a second run?
Correct.
Okay.
Single-tier, they do just one school.
Yep.
The two-tier, they're doing two schools.
When, do you happen to have counts of how many kids are in each bus from the software that we have?
Yes, in the software, yes, but by cutting two buses, some of the bus has more than 55 students, and we're not able to reduce that number. So throughout the year, they may, there may, some students getting parking permits or being dropped off, but at the beginnings of the school year, the number is high.
Let me explain one thing. When you do your routing and scheduling, you have to root for every eligible student.
We understand that part. So is there any savings in this contract from what we've had in our past?
Your contract is going up next year from the cost this year approximately, I want to say, $13,000.
Minus, so minus one bus, but it's costing us $13,000 more?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, we said the same number of buses from last year. Same level.
Same number of buses this year.
But we eliminated one, is what you're saying?
Last year.
Last year.
Last year, it's not excluding.
Right.
It's not eliminated from.
So we weren't able to work with that number anymore, and we're increasing our bus costs by $13,000?
Correct. You're running the same number of buses next year that you're running currently at a cost, total cost of approximately $13,000.
Great. Any other questions?
Is that, what page is that on? Is that on one of these?
Page seven, top of page seven. $13,140 is the difference.
I have a question, because I think I know the answer to it, because I think it's a significant difference. It looks like the cost is going up $13,000, but we opened a bid for them last year, which we turned down. That was significantly higher than what's come back here, correct?
Correct.
By like $40,000?
Compared to last year's contract, we actually saved $40,000. And from year two to year five, our increase is 2.5 percent, or COLA, whichever is higher. But last contract, our increase is an average 4 percent every year increase. So this contract is much better than the last one.
And when you consider what's going on in the industry, at least with those that have bid recently, and you're looking at 11 and 12 percent increases annually, your increases not only have a relatively low increase the first year, but you have significant cost avoidance the following four years in comparison to other districts that have bid.
Okay, any other questions? So we're looking for a motion to accept the transportation contract with Tellstone.
Actually, if I might, I formulated the recommendation for the vote, and that would be that the bid entitled "School Transportation" dated November 21st, 2016, be awarded to Tellstone and Son of Blackstone, Mass. for FY 2018 to 2022, five years, at a first-year cost of $1,287,309, including the performance bond, on the basis of their being the lowest responsible and responsive bidder and in the best public interest.
Okay, anyone want to move that?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Steve, and second by Jane. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any ananimos? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge the amount of time and effort that Ms. Cobb put in helping me put together the, not only the documents and support of the bid, but in reviewing the bid specs and helping us formulate what the needs of the district were, both currently and prospectively into the future. So I thank her, and I thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And when, if we could get a copy of the numbers for each bus in the near future. It doesn't have to come in a packet.
For current year?
For this, yeah.
For next year or for current year?
Correct.
Does the contracts for next year?
What is readily available for you?
The current year.
Current year, that's fine.
But the issue is you have to have the seats.
Right. But we're run, so are you saying our buses have the capacity of 83, but we're only putting 55 on the bus?
For little kids, maybe 83, but for bigger kids, middle school, high school.
You have to have a seat for everyone. There's nobody's questioning that.
When you run the middle, high school, it's 55 people, so an 83 bus. Where if you're running in the elementary school, it's, you can put the 83.
So now we're moving back to school committee. We have the superintendent midyear evaluation, and Alan has submitted for us his goal actions and benchmarks, and I think this was sent already, correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So would you like to go through and give us your highlights?
Sure, sure. Thank you very much, Mrs. Vinoco. Yes, you should have received all of the evidence in Google Doc along with the district improvement plan and the goals that we are working on this year. The first one is the curriculum and instructional delivery, standard 1A, and we are implementing big ideas math and establishing the curriculum in X2. We will have that hopefully before May for the committee. We have been somewhat limited by the number of professional development days being three. However, we have had staff and principals attend, and that list needs to be uploaded into the doc. We, because of the budget being approved on September 1st, we did run into a little bit of a calendar issue slowing down the rollout of the Chromebooks, but we did finally get them in the hands of our freshmen and sophomores, and we are now utilizing them. Students seem to be very happy with the technology and the device, and we will continue to work both with our media center coordinator, Ms. Hunt, along with Mr. Bozan and Mr. Conklin, to make sure that these are being utilized just the way we want them. And so far, as I said, so good. And we hope that we can afford, so they would take them as they become sophomores and juniors next year, and then be able to put them in the hands of freshmen and seniors as well. The next goal on diverse learner needs, this is around special education, and we are working with those numbers, and Ms. Braverman will be here at the next meeting to give the midyear update on special education with all of that data. We did slow down the rollout of KidTalk, and we are in the process of moving that forward. The data will be presented at the webinar.
Can I request an update of the social motion room?
Sure.
On that update?
Yep.
From Loretta?
In the middle school or all of them?
Do you want, when, do you want me to include all those sub-separate classrooms?
Well, that one was the one we approved this year with the teacher and the aide, so I just want to know where we're at with that and how we're doing with that.
Okay.
And then the login tracking numbers of the, just an update on, she's going to update.
And she will have that, yes.
That's what she's coming for, right?
Yes, exactly, yep.
That social emotional weight, looking for like number of students in it, how it's staffed, or what do you look for?
Well, I think we originally, there was three, and then five, or two were possible comebacks.
Okay.
And then we approved a teacher, or I don't know what the cost was, and then an aide, so I just, I would like an update on that.
Okay.
If it's still, you know, where are we at with that?
Yep. Okay, we'll make sure we include that. The next, the assessment in student learning, we are looking at the STARS assessment. I believe elementary is just doing their midyear now, as they're on trimesters, and I just received the data on six, seven, and eight, so I will, I'll be able to put that into the Google Doc as soon as we get that reviewed. I believe we will be.
On track.
On track. But that will be in there before the next meeting. I think that the rollout of STARS has been embraced by administration and staff, and I think it gives us another very good set of tools to improve our teaching and learning.
I don't know if it's too soon, but I would definitely like to see what the elementary school is doing with it.
Yep.
When we put it, went forward with it last year in the middle school, was immediate
Yes.
information and impact on the kids, and are we able to do that in the elementary school? What are they doing with the information that?
And as soon as that midyear assessment is complete, then we'll have that information.
So the information that's going to be uploaded, is that to show this 50 percent?
Yeah, it should be.
The student growth?
We should be able to read that to make sure that we're on track.
Okay.
Or exceeding. Goal four was around standard two, the environment, and we all know that four of our schools are in need of attention. We do have infrastructure needs in them. The committee did vote at the last meeting to approve the statement of interest for all three of those projects, and Mr. Tringalli and I attended Millville's Board of Selectmen meeting last Monday, where we went through all of the capital, let me include that as well.
How was that received?
That capital needs of the building, and I think the selectmen followed the timeline as well as what has been looked at. Chairman Repose had walked Millville last year with Dr. Hahe, myself, and the custodial staff, so they have a pretty good understanding of what we are up against.
Were they receptive to?
They were. I think the timeline was a little hard to follow, and I told the chair that I would send them the detailed timeline, which I will do with Blackstone as well, so they understand where we are throughout the year, because it becomes fairly deadline-oriented to make sure that we hit all of those. I think the only concern that both towns will have on these projects is the number to be needed for the engineering study, and that becomes somewhat of a, it comes without a guarantee, because there's no, there's no set model that would guarantee that we would be using that data if we didn't get the project awarded in this current year. That data can be used the following year with minor tuning, but that becomes what we use to go forward, because it details the scope and the sequence and the work that needs to be done with a dollar value. So that becomes the basis for the bidding after the projects are approved. So I think the timeline is what everyone needs to have as we go through this year, because these are projects that the school building authority depends upon the revenues from the sales tax. That varies every year, and then each year is different in terms of the amount of projects that are brought forth to them. I believe that we are certainly, we qualify based upon the ratings for the buildings, and we meet all of the benchmarks in terms of age of the building and what qualifies for the accelerated repairs and the core renovations. So I'll get that timeline for this year as well.
Yeah, they really only pushed back. They were not challenging any of the items or the content at all. They were just initially worried about how much money and when. And that's what, again, the engineering study is imminent.
But they are the ones that want us to move forward with it.
But the rest of it is pretty far down the road, so it's, you know, obviously with Millville's financial situation is immediate, so they were, I think, somewhat pleased to know that the big numbers were not in this next fiscal year. It's pretty far down the road.
The one good thing we did cover was the current capital costs that the district has, the sewer project, this building's financing, and then the roof projects. The sewer project retires July of 18, so that's only one more year to carry that, and then that money is freed up. And then this, the bond on the middle school is completed in 2024. So by the, if these projects were accepted, the earliest they would bond would probably be 2020 or 2021, so there would only be a couple more years to carry and then free up additional funds. So we discussed the current capital requirements as we know them. Safety and security, as everyone knows, we now have a school resource officer, Officer Nimsik, who is a terrific addition, and he has also worked hand-in-hand with Officer Shepherd in Millville, and with very smooth implementation of that, I think that the student response, the staff response has been, has been very accepting. One item that we know we want to look at, and certainly Bill has gone through this, is the ALICE training. It is a very key component of school safety. It was interesting to hear that we practiced religiously fire drills, and that becomes from day one, when you march into a public school, for the next 13 years or 14 years, you know fire drills. The last time a student perished in a fire in this country was 1958. So I thought that, I guess that speaks to the fact that we, when you practice and drill, you don't have any serious injuries and fatalities. The numbers around some of the school issues have been much more staggering, and I think that the ALICE training has become the benchmark and the best practice. training has become the benchmark and the best practice, and we are looking forward to rolling that out as we go through the rest of this spring with Officer Nimsik. Obviously, it's age appropriate, and it's by building, but it is a very, very strong method to ensure the safety of all staff and students.
I'd echo that. We've done that in my building as well. We have regular evacuations, or we bug out, we go down the street, we, but the stumbling block we have is how to notify parents on the other end.
Right.
That we have relocated, and then how do you dismiss from off-site? That's, we haven't cured that ourselves yet, but that's, the first couple trips are kind of tough, but beyond that, now it's old hat to our students, they're used to it.
And I think too, students, especially in the upper grades, become equals. They become part of the team that works together. And I remember a couple of incidents in my previous district where older students went on the cell phone, and parents came down and blocked emergency vehicles from reaching. So you really have to cover all of the scenarios and practice, 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 so that you can react and be safe. And so we look forward to continuing with that rollout. The next standard is the fiscal systems, and certainly a professional practice goal. A lot going on at the federal and the state level. We're talking about education. Finally, it seemed to be a pretty quiet conversation for the last year or so. We are going to have host a budget workshop on Saturday, February 11th.
Where?
And that will be at the high school cafeteria, and I may do some cooking, depending upon how many people are there.
Do you know what time?
Eight to 10.
Eight AM?
We didn't want to intrude on everyone's weekend, but we figured that was a good time. I know it was done in the district in the last century with Mr. Chaky and Mr. Hart. It was very well received. I think the beauty of it is you get everybody with the same numbers and the same information at the same time, and that allows us to move forward. So that is February 11th, and we are working on that budget book. Mrs. Cobb has done a terrific job so far of putting together a document that has the pertinent information for everybody to be able to understand the big picture.
Are we inviting the, all the board?
Yes.
Yeah, right?
Inviting all the town boards, parents, taxpayers, parents of older children, long graduated students. I think it's important to get as many folks there to understand where we are and what we're looking at. We are, the plan is, tonight I will take the committee through a very, very early and preliminary look at the need for this year. We know that, as we will go through it, that it is not probably realistic in terms of what we have known in years past. However, we would not be doing our job if we didn't put out what is involved in every step of the way. The Governor's House budget was released yesterday, and the news was, I guess we could say, predictable, and there wasn't a lot of addressing some of the structural needs that all public school districts are facing. So the ninth, we will have a further refined budget. Again, we'll get that to you as soon as it is complete. February 16th meeting would be the preliminary budget presented to the committee, and from there, I will be going to visit as many folks as possible, Mrs. Cobb, senior centers, getting to the boards, so that we can return to a speedy process, where we, the goal would be to have a budget after the last town meeting, at the end of May. That is critical. And so I think by addressing the needs and answering the questions and listening to folks in terms of what is on their mind, I think that is an important way to move forward, and that's the plan for the next several weeks.
Are you still doing something on the 4th? Saturday the 4th?
No, Saturday, we just can't get it done in time. What we are going to do is have Supper with the Super again this year, and it's posted on my superintendent's corner on the main page of the website, and we'll get the word out Wednesday, February 8th at the high school, and then Monday, March 6th, and Monday, March 13th are the dates for the other buildings. I think the middle school is the 13th, along with MES, and then AFM and JFK on the 6th, and that will be a great opportunity to talk to a lot of different people, from students to parents to staff, and the committee is welcome at all four of them, as Mrs. Sheridan will be preparing dinner for us. Last goal, number six, is professional culture standards for ENF, and I have, we have addressed a lot of the daily issues by putting the bi-weekly update to the committee in the off weeks from a meeting, so that we keep the communication flowing. We also will try to really let the committee know, we have so many different levels of meetings, as those of us in education know, but the leadership team meetings are important, because it's a chance for us to get together to trade information, so I've included those as well in the folder, so that you can see that we are in fact meeting, and you can see exactly what the agendas have been. And I think that in a lot of districts that we hear, that communication, you can never have enough, and as long as it's the right communication, and it's good communication, and it's accurate, then folks feel that they can, they get the answers. I also included in my update on the superintendent's corner on the website, the fact that we do have, many districts have issues within their districts that sometimes spiral from social media and beyond, and I just wanted everyone to know that, that if there are concerns and issues and comments or questions, to please go through the appropriate chain of command, and we will address them. And it's the classroom teacher, it's the building principal, it's Dr. Thompson or myself, and then to the committee if folks are, but we really need everyone to be professionally courteous and make sure that the right people get the opportunity to address the situations. So I think that we've made some inroads there. It's amazing how quickly the year goes, and the fact that we just don't have any downtime anymore. Every single day is just jam-packed and chock-full, and, you know, there's nothing better than slipping into the back of a classroom, watching great teaching and learning, and that really continues to drive us to improve and do the very best that we can. So that's a brief update on where I am, and certainly will continue to use the Google Doc in the folder to put that in.
And does anyone have any questions for Alan on his update?
And the request duly noted, and we'll get those out.
And moving on to subcommittee updates for school committee, does anyone have anything they would like to share, or you're posting for them?
Yep, the regional agreement committee is posted for next Thursday.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, on to report of superintendent, bless you.
Bless you.
And we have several items.
Yes.
Back to you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vannaco. The first one is the approval of the high school student activity transfer. Again, this is something that we do well in this district. This is from Mrs. Cobb, that in accordance with MGL, Chapter 71, Section 47, hereby request reimbursement to be issued from the Student Activity Agency account to the Student Activities checking account. This amount is $21,133.12, and everything is in order, so I would ask for the committee's approval to make that transfer.
Okay, so looking for a motion for the Student Activities Account Transfer. As written.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? Everyone see it in our packet. I saw it earlier. Okay, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is the approval of the 2017-2018 school calendar. We have families that like to plan as early as possible around the school calendar for a variety of reasons. This seems to be, it used to be that it was February, March, when committees would make this approval. Now it seems to be right after the first of the year that the discussions happen. So in front of you, you see in the packet, based upon the current Unit A contract, staff would report the Tuesday before Labor Day, giving us student, students reporting on the first day of school, August 30th, and then with the Friday off for the long Labor Day weekend, and then recommencing. The first Professional Development Day is across, is unilateral across the Blackstone Valley Consortium, so that many districts already have that date, October 6th. So we look forward to, again, putting in some very high-quality professional development on October 6th. The 9th, Columbus Day brings that along weekend. There has been some discussion across the state about Columbus, I mean Veterans Day, and Veterans Day falls on a Saturday, so it can be celebrated on the Friday. So that would be requesting for a holiday. Then we have our Thanksgiving break, as we have in December. Christmas break would be the Friday, December 22nd. That is a half-day by contract, and then that we return on Tuesday, January 2nd. This year, we propose the third Professional Development Day to be the Friday, which we had done in past years, Martin Luther King Weekend, and then our February break remains intact around Presidents' Day, February 19th to the 23rd, which seems to be a much more traveled vacation break than I remember. Easter is early next year, April 1st, so Good Friday is the 30th, so we would again like to move our last PD as late in the year, and we propose to do it on March 29th, which gives the students a little bit of a break going into the Easter long weekend. And then April break again would be around Patriots' Day, the 16th through the 20th. Graduation, Day 168, would be Friday, June 1st, and with this configuration, Day 180, the last day of school, would be Friday, June 15th, and the makeup five days would be June 18th to the 22nd, which would give us plenty of time and actually get us out of school about a week earlier than we had prior to starting after Labor Day. So I think this is a very, very well put-together calendar. Talking to other superintendents, this seems to be very similar to what many districts are adopting. Certainly, that Friday, October 6th, looks to be a good day for many, and so I would ask for the committee's approval of this 2017-2018 school calendar.
Jane, do you have a question?
Yeah, just can you make sure to put the October 6th date in with the text? It's yellow.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Because some of us are.
Yep.
Read down the line.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the 2017-2018 school calendar.
So moved.
Thanks, Jane. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Jane, and second by Tara. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's nice and early this year. Last year was delayed for negotiations.
Thank you very much. What I'd like to do is just skip ahead. We've already really touched on item E and G, the Supper with the Super dates. Again, they're up in the superintendent's corner, and they'll be sent out. High school, Wednesday, February 8th, and AFM and JFK, Monday, March 6th, with the middle school on Monday, March 13th at 5:00, and the Millville Elementary on Monday, the 13th at 6:30. And again, that's a great opportunity to share a meal and really ask a lot of questions in a very informal setting, and to really have an in-depth conversation about what's on people's minds. The February 11th, that Saturday, High School Cafeteria, 8 to 10, will be our budget workshop, and then we will move around the towns after that. And then the facilities issues and update, it's really what we had already briefed on. Millville Elementary, the complex, and the high school, that we are going to put forth as statements of interest, and that the capital costs, we at least retire one of the three, the smallest one, but still we retire it next year. And with any of these projects, once they are approved by MSBA, then they need to have approval by the towns, both towns for the high school project, and certainly for the individual towns, for the elementary schools. It will be important that we adhere to those timelines, but the debt would not be incurred for several years if, in fact, they are approved in this round.
Best-case scenario, when would that work start?
If, if, a project was approved this year and then awarded in January of 2018, then town meetings in the spring of 18 would take the two votes, one to approve the project, the second to finance it in its entire amount, even though MSBA will reimburse as we go through the checkpoints. And then the bidding would take place, and then the projects would ideally start in the summer of 2018. The high school would probably take two summers, possibly three, but definitely two, depending upon how much work we can do on the shoulder seasons around May, June, and September, October, after 4 o'clock. That seems to work, and it has worked on projects that I've done, to get us to a completion date that doesn't keep tying up the summers. But if it was two summers, then it would be 18 and 19, and the bonding would occur then 2020. So that would be the earliest that it would be. These buildings are in desperate need. I'm becoming an expert on the roofs, because I lock them, and I'm becoming an expert on boiler rooms, and so that, those are the key concerns to make sure that we get this, these timelines updated. The FY18 draft budget, I know that we had that up, and I think I can derive it from the podium. You have in your packet several documents that reference it.
Do you want to do the unit B?
That's the committee's prerogative, if you want to do that. Thank you, sir. The unit B contract, again, it is, it is our assistant principals. Right now, we have two, in middle school and the high school, in the unit, and you should have received both the old contract and the proposed new contract. We tried to mirror the Unit A in every way. I know, I think there's a couple of, yeah, but hopefully we can get that to approval.
Yeah, and if we could, that would be my only thing. When I looked through and read both of them, I had some questions, but they weren't answered, so that was fine. But I would appreciate if the death in the family mirrored the Unit A, so that reflected that if it was a life partner, relative, and living in the same household.
Yep.
So, and, you know, if they agree, then.
Do you want to share with us what your questions were, or you?
No, I just, I went back to unit, they were questions I answered myself, like, is that the same amount we had in Unit A?
Yeah.
And stuff like that. And then I just wondered, there was a third principal still listed there, but it says not filled at this.
So I had, I didn't want to ask a duplicate question, if you already asked, just, why did we remove the technology director?
The, the, the previous contract included both
When you just, it was a recognition, so I'm curious why.
And a special ed director. In most districts, if not In most districts, if not all other districts, those positions on the leadership team are individual contracts, and it certainly gives, it puts them in the right place. And ed reform, prior to 1993, all staff was in a unit somewhere. And so, principals, assistant principals were then given far more authority and discretion, so they were removed from the collective bargaining process and worked under individual contracts. And I, so that was, that was the intent, to do that, and there was, there was no disagreement on doing that.
It can stay listed, though, on the contract.
Under recognition? Because I know, I know.
We don't have a technology director.
No, but if we got one, I would not want it to be.
Oh, you would not want it to go in there?
I would not want it to be similar with a Director of Student Services, or, or a curriculum director. We would, you would want that to be.
Was our curriculum director under Unit B?
I don't think, I don't believe so. I think the two that were in the old contract were.
Were the Director of Student Services and Technology.
But we, I definitely remember that discussion. It was, they were, that was actually under two contracts at the time. So, he, they, we had a contract with the special ed director, and they were covered under Unit B, which.
He had to make a choice at the time.
Right, right.
So, that one, but I don't recall having anything further than that with technology or curriculum, you know, like, a written contract that would be, it would come from you?
Yes. Yes, and all of them now do have individual employment contracts.
Right, well, we don't have a curriculum director, and we don't.
Right, but the current leadership team.
Right, and those are accurate, but that's what I noticed between the two contracts, is that the recognition was changed. It was just down to the, so I would question the same thing, build it. Is there anything wrong with leaving it in there saying unfilled? I mean, do we want it to become a contractual position, or is it a unit?
For me, and I think for the Unit B membership, they were fine with keeping them outside of that contract.
I mean, for me, it secures a pay scale, and.
But that's not necessarily advantageous to us.
Correct.
For other positions.
It gives us far, it gives me, or the superintendent, far more flexibility to develop, strengthen the team by keeping it outside of that.
Okay, so is anyone interested in making a motion to accept it as it is, or we're going, going to go back to check with Unit B?
Just to change, just to, just to accept it as written with the change to match the bereavement eligibility.
To Unit A.
To add, to add, mirror.
To mirror Unit A, yeah.
I'll make a motion. I'll make that motion.
So, motion made by Bill. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Bill and second by Steve. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, so all those in favor of accepting the Unit B contract with the agreement, the changing in the bereavement eligibility to mirror Unit A's wording. All of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
On to your draft.
The last item on my report this evening is the preliminary, preliminary, preliminary look at FY18 budget. And I guess what I would, would start with is preface what I'm about to show you with, while these numbers have been debated and, and poked and prodded since November, collectively, it looks like a big number. What we did this year was to, if you remember, last year, we didn't have everything known. And we also strategically did not want to put in everything until we got in later in the season and had a better idea. So, what we have done, as you'll see, is everything that is needed is here. We also know that we probably will not be able to fund a 10% increase in the budget. And with, as you'll see, little or no motivation from either the state or the federal government, it will make it that much tougher for local towns to support their schools. That is something that has been ongoing for a while. There are several factors that make this one a challenge. So, thank you, Jesse, for putting the PowerPoint up. So, the overview is simply that I do have a narrative. We wanted to define the increase. We do have issues and concerns. And then, where do we go from January 26th to successful approval at town meetings in May? And that's, that's really our goal, my goal this year. It was a very, very difficult cycle last year for a couple of reasons, and we hope that we can avoid them going forward. So, as you'll see, as we go through this, this will be a challenging cycle. The state budget that came out yesterday has $20 per student increase in Chapter 70 funding. So, for us, that's $35,660. That doesn't address the increases in special ed services, out-of-district transportation, the, the costs around contractual and salary, our health insurance increasing, and the technology and curriculum that we need to keep pace with all of what the state has given us. So, while it looks good to say, as the governor did, that he's putting $91 million into Chapter 70, and it's going to be at historic levels, I guess I couldn't disagree with that, it's the largest number Chapter 70's ever been, 12% of the state budget, but at the end of the day, it doesn't address what the Foundation Budget Review Commission's report of 2015 outlined as the necessary dollars needed to move us forward. As I've said, the, the Foundation Budget Review Commission came up with a billion-dollar shortfall in Chapter 70, just around rising special education costs, as well as health insurance. Whether you're a regional or a local district, it is far outpacing the original foundation budget, which we still use from 1993. The metrics that were used to design that, technology, is $35 per student. That's what's in that original foundation budget formula. Everything has increased, and then some, in the subsequent years, since 1993. The other piece around that foundation budget formula is that our revenues and our offsets continue to decline. The kindergarten grant is no longer funded. Our circuit breaker reimbursements, which are also, total circuit breaker is funded at last year's level, along with regional transportation. So, we're not getting 100% of regional transportation, which the law originally was written for, we're going to get 60 or 70%. Along with the fact that our reimbursements continue to be lower, and our federal title grants continue to be reduced. There is, I believe, a page in the back of the packet that, that shows that in FY15, we received federal dollars in the amount of $804,000. It declined slightly last year, FY16, to $784,000. Our current year grants are $724,000, almost $725,000. So, our revenues and our offsets are declining. We are asked to do more, certainly around IDEA and ESL, ELL, with those populations increasing. It's well documented, the social and emotional and anxiety of our students, regardless of where they are academically, they all face it. And, and we have finally, I think, as a, as a state, recognized that, and that has occurred for a variety of reasons. So, those are the neediest students that require the most money to educate. And, and yes, we still need to get them to achieve. And so, because of those factors, this FY18 budget will be a challenge. And, you know, we, we don't want to have to reduce our force. We pay for that on the, on the backside with unemployment costs. So, we have, we will try to refine this budget with the committee's blessing to get it to a workable number, but we, we definitely are facing the perfect storm. And it's nothing that we haven't faced over the last several years. I believe there's, I just, I did a quick, this is not on the slides, but the budget cycles of the last three years since I've been your superintendent, and you can see that, over time, we just didn't keep pace. You know, in five of the previous 11 years, our budget was less. And that's, that's something we know. We've been looking at that number. We also know that each year, over the last five or six, we're, we're that million dollars short every year in what the district needs to provide the best opportunities for every single one of our students. And so, you know, it, it's, it's interesting to look, you know, when Dr. Davis was the superintendent that year, the preliminary budget, you know, was, was almost a million-dollar increase. The committee adopted a budget that had a $725,000 increase. The towns voted on the very last day of June that year, a budget that was reduced. And that set in motion a wholesale reduction in force of folks that didn't have professional status. FY16, the preliminary budget was $1,007,000 above, but only because we hadn't kept pace in the previous years. It wasn't because all of a sudden, we, we had to go out and spend $1,007,000 on, on stuff. And then, that was reduced to the 22,388, that was adopted on March 8th of 2015. And then, that was reduced further to our budget of FY16's 21,791,340. And then, last year, again, with our preliminary budget, was $1,500 of an increase, for many different reasons. We adopted the 22,585, which if we had this year, would have smoothed out many of the bumps in front of us this year and next year. So, the budgets, you don't look at them as just one finite year, July 1 to June 30. They ripple back, and they ripple forward. And so, you know, we ended up with a 22,017,480, which has provided a lot of challenges, because there was no contingencies in that budget. We did have to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on staff tuitions and things that we, that we needed, that the committee was, was, was right in approving. But it puts some of the, the facilities and maintenance and operation stuff that we desperately need, because we wanted to focus on classroom and what students need, and that's where we have to maintain the focus. And so, that's where we are looking as we go forward. The technology, the curriculum that we need, we're just doing what everyone else is trying to do, and in some cases, has already done. But we are, we are proud of what we do. We're proud of where we are. We're proud of what our kids do when they leave us. We've got darn good students, and that's the one thing that we can't lose sight of. So, you know, that's the, the previous three years, there's that gap when we look at the preliminary budget. And, you know, the 1.7 to the 1.5, we're going to get down below that. We have no choice, because there are no grants out there that we qualify for. There are no other offsets. We have streamlined our efficiencies. The problem is, our physical plant and our infrastructure is requiring last-minute Band-Aids to keep them going. And so, we have to take that on and get our, our schools ready for the next generation. So, back to the narrative, you know, at the end of that, it's the, the fact that we're getting pinched on the federal grants. Federal funding used to be 9 and 10%. In the 80s and the 90s of last century, it was, it was 9, 10, 11% federal dollars for each district. We're now down below 3, and a lot closer to 2% of our total source and uses of funds, our federal money. We have about 48%, 49% state, and, and the balance is, is our local budgets. So, it shifted completely from when the state took 60%, and the towns only had to pick up 30. And so, those percentages, the piece of the pie is dramatically shifting over the last 15 years, partly around rising health insurance costs, which drain another 25% of the state's budget, and around special education that was never fully funded under IDEA since the inception of the law. So, that is the drum that I will continue to beat, I guess. Because I haven't had anybody at the state or federal level disagree with that statement. So, as, as we know, at the national level, there was a kind of a vacuum around public education in the last campaign and election cycle. We know that our nominee for the Secretary of Education seems to understand charter schools well, and the voucher system, but is woefully out of touch with the everyday aspect of educating our kids. And, and Dave had mentioned that NSSAA is the, for the first time in their history, is not supporting the nominee for Secretary of Education. And I think there's a lot of, of questions, obviously, around that, because that's going to impact our world, and the federal dollars will come down too close to zero.
When, when is that?
Confirmation here?
The 31st.
31st. They're going through all the ethics now. If she would only write a check, I mean, it would be fine. She's got the money.
AM money.
So, the state, we, we know, has given us more technology requirements, the assessments that we are now moving forward with, whatever we call them, PARC, MCAS 2.0, MCAS.
3.0.
Are going to require that they are computer-based testing. So, you need the bandwidth, which we now have, but we also need the technology and the infrastructure to support that. And so, that is going to further increase the pressure on, on our tech plan. The bottom line is that there is no help for local budgets, and that is unfortunate, because the way this public education evolved was that everybody had a stake in the game. So, that's where we are. We have three, we have four, five positions, excuse me, that we are looking at. The most important and the most pressing is the network technician, because of all of the technology that we need and have in place. Mr. Dudek is looking at another foreign language teacher to expand the offerings there. And we are looking, again, at one more FTE in each elementary school, this time around STEM, and to be able to handle that, that component, and to alleviate some of our scheduling issues at the elementary building.
The, I don't know if you want questions in the middle.
Anytime, anytime.
The, there was discussion about French being eliminated. Is that correcting that issue?
That would, that would help balance that, yes.
We're, so we're still going to offer French?
We're hoping we'll have a position so that we can offer.
French is offered now, but French 1 wasn't offered.
Okay. Thank you.
So, when you look at this number, it's not $1,007,000, it's not $1,005,000, it's 2.2, $2,000. And we know that the only number up there that is really set, that we own, is the contractual number. The insurance and the benefit number remains to be seen.
What is that budget of that right now, with that number?
We put it in as 10. The, the.
We're not accepting 10, but we can put that placeholder. We're not accepting 10, but we can put that placeholder.
Because we just were alerted yesterday from Maya that the renewal rates range is 4.5 to 15%. So, that really doesn't help us if we are on the upper end of that. And again, the last two cycles, we buy our health insurance like we buy used cars. I'll pay you this for that. No, I can only pay you this. You need to pay us this. Okay, then let's take out the deluxe side wall in the body molding and...
We'll go shopping for another used car.
Right. Now, the problem is, what emboldened this renewal rate was that the GIC came out at 10%. So, again, it's, it's a closed shop and, and the problem is, we want our health insurance to cover everything. And I, I have said this analogy a couple of times. Stop me if you don't want me to say it. But our homeowner's insurance doesn't cover everything. It doesn't cover the roof, you know? It doesn't cover, um, the paint. And our car insurance doesn't cover the tires and the tune-up. But we want our health insurance to cover every penny. And so, as long as that is the, the, the mindset of, of all consumers of insurance, then as we use more of it, it keeps costing more. And, and we have the data, not up to date, but our loss ratios are, are rapidly climbing. So, our premiums taken in do not begin to cover our claims. And that, I can't really argue that fact, um, whereas three and four years ago, we had zero increases. Two years ago, it was a 5%. Last year was a 7.1 blended. But, so we had to take and look at different pieces of it, adding in a fourth tier of, of RX, increasing co-pays, um, trying to keep the basics of, of the max, um, benefit in place. So, that's going to become, uh, a challenge. But there is, there is, um, we, we're going to have to find ways to lower that number and that's the work between now and the ninth. And you'll see the revisions downward, um, and then, you know, we'll get the, the line item budget detail to the committee, um, probably, if not by the ninth, shortly thereafter. If we can get it ready for the ninth, we'll try. So, you have that line item, 150-page document that you can see where every...
Well, you want something for the 11th because that's when you're, you're doing your breakfast.
Yes, and we will have...
So, the ninth...
We absolutely have to have something before, before some of the public gets a breakfast.
No, no, no. Everyone's going to have the budget book.
And it can't be 2.2 million.
Right, right.
You know, do you think we need an extra meeting or...
No, I think what we'll do is we will give back to the committee where we see the, the budget flowing, let the committee take a look at that. So, the ninth, you have that. On the 11th, what they're going to get, remember a couple of years ago, we did a coffee table board?
Yes, but we, I, I mean, we need to start it at understandable and workable numbers and information, so...
And that's, that's what you will have for the ninth.
Can I just make a request?
Sure.
That if we're going to be discussing it on the ninth at this meeting, I got to have it on the sixth or seventh so I can look at it.
That's the plan.
Okay.
That's the plan.
All right. Because I, I can't just get it here and then look at it and then I'm going to have a billion questions.
Now, let me ask, is, is the, is the wish of the committee to have the line item detail, 150 pages, um...
I mean, we need it.
For the ninth.
If we need to see where...
I want to know what these increases are and how they, and if we're saving any, if, if we're, if there are retirements and how, how the, I mean, is there ways that we have to reduce staff to increase staff? Um, I, I need to...
The legend made the mention of retirement because I think the other piece of it is last year, the committee did offer an early retirement incentive to those who had not declared. And I think we should do that again.
That's going to be a small number compared to these big numbers on our page, so...
No, but every, we're going to chip away across, uh, multiple lines to be able to get into where we need to be. So, we will have the budget detail, line by line, uh, for, uh, Monday, the 6th, in the afternoon, maybe Tuesday morning, the 7th.
Can we have class sizes too?
Yes, I have that as well.
I'm, I'm just concerned with the ninth to the 11th timeframe because...
Well, the 11th...
You're going to be publicizing the meeting.
11 is this.
Right. The 11th is, no, the 11th is a budget book with conversation. It's not line by line, but it's really a chance to, to listen to everybody and to, and to let them understand where we are.
But it's to, but it's to show them what we need.
Right.
It is to show them what we need.
It's going to be some numbers in that though. It's not, it's going to be all concepts and theories.
Yeah. But, but that certainly, to wade through, you know, 1,200 lines of a budget is not what we want to do for, for the public. We want them to have a book that shows them where...
Right, but we need to know...
You need to have, so we'll have that for the committee.
What, what the needs are, so...
Yeah, we'll have that for the committee.
Because if I, if I have my, my, I'd like it on the 6th. I'd like it the Friday before, I'd like it the weekend. During the week, it's, it's crazy for me, but I, I'll, I'll take it on the, on the 6th just so I can have a day or two just to go through it.
We'll get to work on that tomorrow.
But then we're still waiting to the ninth and if there's, um, discussion between us, I mean, where does that put you for the 11th? Should, should we move to our ninth meeting or the 11th meeting for you? Because I think we're going to be more...
The 11th is, is the right time to have it because the next week, the next two weekends of February break, winter break, and then we'll have plenty of opportunity in March between, um, board meetings, other town boards...
And when do we certify? Or when do we have our, our public hearing?
Preliminary hearing is, um, February 16th.
16th.
Is the preliminary hearing, February 16th. And then the adoption is March 9th.
Okay, because here's, here's, here's my concern.
Yep.
If a budget book, and I remember the, the book if you did, I appreciate getting it, but if a budget book goes out on the 11th and it has the need, has this kind of summary?
Yep.
Rate, need-based budget is, my concern is, boards of selectmen from the town will go back to their towns going, "They want $2 million!" And I, and I...
They're doing that anyways.
Oh, I know, but if we say we want...
We can, we can...
We got to whittle this before they get that.
We can refine this number down.
Right.
But I just wanted to show that this is the true need based upon where we've been and where we need to go. But we also know the towns simply cannot afford it because it's, it's not fair for them to bear the brunt.
And they've made it very clear to us...
Where the states...
Where they want it to be.
Right.
And I think, you know, as much as we all agree...
Yep.
That if it had been this average percentage each year, we'd be in a different spot. And, and you said, "We haven't kept the pace, but we can't go backwards." So, I think this is here, we have to set the pace. And it's not going to be 2.2 million.
No.
It, it's going to be a percentage that they're not going to be able to say no to, which...
Well, they can, but, I mean, at the end of the day...
Now, did you have a number of percentage? You said, "We, we know what they can afford." Do we have a number?
They, well, you know, fairly, they, as much as I don't agree with a lot of the things that Millville, FinCom, or Board, or Board of Selectmen say aloud publicly, it has been said many times that it's not fair that you bring us a 5% increase when we can't even raise taxes more than 2.5%. So, there's a number, I don't, but it's, and, and, you know, it's a number that we would have to agree on with them. It's not 5% when they can't raise the taxes more than 2.5%. We can't, we have to set a pace so we can keep moving forward at that pace. So, if it's 3% this year or 2.5%, then we don't go backwards from that. We keep moving forward at something that they're going to be able to agree to.
So, if it's, if it's okay with the committee, we'll have the, the refined numbers showing where the reductions are with the line by line item detail budget book, no later than Monday, the 6th. And if we can get it out earlier, we will.
I think the line by line is definitely important.
Yeah.
If you can do it the Friday before, like he said, I, I think that we can...
That's a high percentage.
We'll do our best.
That's next Friday, February 3rd.
So, just a...
I, I have to, I have a clarifying question. So, when, Erin, when you say, um, this is about, this is about Millville, so I, I don't know what the answer is and I'd like someone from the Millville side of this to maybe inquire. Um, when you say that they can go to the 2.5%, okay?
Raise tax, I'm saying...
I, I know what that is. But are they, are they going to their maximum levy every year? Does anyone, anyone know that?
I believe so, this. According to my tax bill, but I...
Well, that's not, the levy's different. The levy is where they can go and, um...
We can definitely ask.
That, that would be, it'd be interesting to see.
Good to hear it from them instead of assuming. So, I agree with you on that.
It's not a bad idea, but when she's...
I just want it to be something they can't say no to because they've said, they've said numbers before.
Unless it's the minimum.
What is going to be the next thing that, what is, what is, what is the comeback going to be to that?
They're going to say...
I know what it would be to this. What is it going to be to...
But there has to be an acceptance or at least an understanding of where we have been and where we need to go.
Yes.
It will not be a 10%.
And, right, and it can't be, I mean...
But my, here's my worry. I just have one other worry just from, just from very surface-level numbers. If I look at the numbers that came out today, the FY18 numbers that you have on here, you have a, you have a Chapter 70, $10,862 on here.
That's, that's what was awarded yesterday.
Right. And then it also has, it cites the minimum contribution...
Yep.
For Blackstone and Millville, that's already set there and...
As part of the foundation budget and fiscal spending.
Right. So, the, so the number that you would put in, I'm, I'm on this page right here, this history. Yeah. So, the number you would put in for Blackstone, uh, is 6,236,685, okay? It's, it's over a million dollars less in minimum contribution from Blackstone.
Right.
And, and it comes out to, my quick numbers, it comes out to just the minimum contribution. So, that's it. What the state is going to give us and what they're saying the towns need to pay, it comes out to 19 million. That's $4 million less than we have right now. That scares me.
It mirrors the shortage statewide, but that's a good point because the difference in net school spending for this year for our district mirrors the shortfall statewide, almost to the percent of Chapter 70, not being, keeping pace with the foundation budget. It's almost the same number, the same percentage statewide. The foundation budget doesn't give us what districts need because it's mired in 1993.
So, you definitely have your work cut out for you.
We'll be busy.
We, we, you know, we just want to make sure that...
I have the deadlines and we'll get them to you.
So, so, looking at what you've put up here...
Yes.
And what came up out from the governor and he gave a lovely speech across every TV channel, um, we actually decrease, even though Chapter 70 goes up $20 a student, we decrease. Are we that, down that many students?
Um, we continue to decline a few. I mean, we're at 17, mid 1700s. But we still get, we're held harmless on Chapter 70 and the increase is $20 per student.
But what number are you looking at?
Bottom line, Chapter 70.
No, there's an increase of 35,660 from 10, uh, 6, 826 to 862. It's 35,660. That's, that's our increase in Chapter 70. That's just history there so you can see where we applied E and D, what the towns' assessments were for the previous budget years and what Chapter 70 was. So, when you add the assessments, the foundation budget assessment and the Chapter 70, that gives you your net school spending, that percentage, that 19-2 that Bill referred to, that is the same amount that the Chapter 7, that the foundation budget is below what is needed to fund the districts at the proper level. The problem is, there's not a billion dollars anywhere at the state level, nor the political will or motivation or creativity to get us there. So, either you lower your expectations in where you're going to spend, you try and find alternative forms, um, and, and then you have to, you have the finite number and that's where we're going to be.
So, like I was saying, you definitely have your work cut out for you and...
No later than Monday.
We know, this committee has made contractual commitments. We definitely know that. You might want to take note of this. And technology and curriculum commitments, so...
Those will be included.
Just remember that we know that...
Yep.
But we need a budget that is something we, that we don't have to relive last year with our town.
The goal will be to have a budget from the last town meeting. So, June 1st, we had, we had sort of... So, the, the last, the last slide here is the issues and concerns and certainly it is around curriculum. We know we need to continue to update and, and professionally develop. We know we have a set of science standards that will cost a lot of money. They're probably going to have to phase that in.
Are there, are there no grants for those standards?
No.
No.
We know we have technology, infrastructure that we've got to maintain in place. We have operational and maintenance needs in our buildings, in our schools that have been put off and put off and put off. And we don't see much help at the state and federal level. And our special ed and health insurance costs continue to rise faster than everything but college tuition. So, we, we will get to work and, and show the refinements and for the committee to review and, and that. But we need line item detail for the committee, no later than Monday.
And if you have a preliminary book that you're going to be using on the 11th, if you can get that on the 6th as well?
Um, yeah, we can, it won't be in, in final format, but we can get that information to you, sure. And that...
I have one more, I'm sorry, one more question. Back on transportation, what's the history of the reimbursement? Like in regional transportation?
Since 19, since Ed reform...
Just the last five years.
Okay, since Ed reform, it's supposed to be funded, subject to appropriation at 100%...
Right.
For all of the regions, all 85 regional districts. Only once has it approached 100%. All the other years have been mired between 60 and 80%.
All right, so I'm going to say 70 as an average.
It's funded, it's flat-funded from last year.
Well, I'm, I'm going back to the bus contract, so if we're paying a million three, we know...
If we're going to get 400, that reduces.
Okay.
Yep. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you very much.
I apologize ahead of time. Okay, moving on to public forum and moving on to school committee forum. Actually, was there anything we wanted to talk to Wen about since she wasn't here?
I think she said it all.
Right. But she wasn't here at the last meeting to talk about the expenditure.
Oh, on the, on the Q2?
Yeah, the newer one, which is actually sideways on my...
I think, I think there was...
Did anyone have any questions for Wen on the expenditure that was in our packet last time? It shows us ending 178. Is that...
Yeah. Um, I, I looked today, it's 161 today, just because we...
And how are you feeling about that?
Scary. As a business manager, because I have to manage the budget, I have to. So, so last year, we reduced our budget in possible lines, like with the hope that we can, um, we don't have to, um, we don't have to pay for the replacement for the technology or postpone the building maintenance, but, um, it is what it is. We have to spend money when the problem comes.
Do we have any money for snow and ice in that one? Is the money for snow and ice in the 178 or is that a separate line? Do we have a line item for snow and ice?
We already encumbered over time.
Right.
You did, encumbered that, okay.
And we're not getting any snow this year.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially with...
We hope for that.
Is the elevator fixed? Is it being used? Is it out of elevator, high school, out of water?
It is working. It is working and we...
Last meeting, you said you were worried about, was it out of water? It had broken, you fixed it.
Yeah, it was broken and fixed.
No, I will, I will say, and I know we say this a lot, but I was in the high school last Friday for a meeting and saw one of the folks like working on a machine and oiling it and taking it apart. And he said, and I, you know, it really stunk, but I'm like, whoa! And, and he was...
Room is your meeting.
What?
Room is your meeting.
The boiler room, no. And, and he said, "Well, it's either this and we, you know, piecemeal or we, we wait for parts we can't afford and it takes two weeks and nobody can..." He was working on the copy machine. Nobody can copy and nobody can do anything. And he was literally like jerry-rigging, you know, paperclips and oiling and, and so we could make things work. And so, thank goodness for those people who, who are, are doing it and can do it and have the, the knowledge and the skills and the ability, but we, we got to fix things.
But a copy machine is leased, don't we have like a repair?
Whatever it was.
I don't, whatever it was.
One of the printing machines.
He wasn't an employee. He was, he was, he was a vendor.
No, 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 no.
But we are lucky, we have, we have two MacGyvers in every building.
There you go.
Okay, so school committee forum.
I have a couple, I'm sorry.
Forum or separate?
Uh, separate, before the public forum.
So I already went there.
Uh, just following up from last meeting in terms of, um, the school lunch policy, follow-up question and with, with balances or whatnot and then, um.
Mrs. Sheridan's going to be here on the ninth.
Okay.
To give us the year-to-date and, and answer the questions on foot service.
All right.
Along with Mrs. Tosti on athletics, Mr. Schaefer on music and Mrs. Braverman on special ed.
Any other questions, Bill?
Uh, no.
Okay, so school committee forum, Georgia? Jean?
Um, pass.
Enough looking forward to the budget season is how I want to phrase it, but this is where all the action is. Next couple of months is where it all is. Again, we're 1.27% average increase for the last 11 years. And what, what, what's the Senate just giving themselves for a raise recently? 40%? Okay, just wanted to point that out.
They haven't had it since 1984.
Yeah, okay. But I, I think you had mentioned is, are Fatman and Kirov coming at some point?
I will ask them to come in probably later in the cycle, more like mid-March, mid to end March.
I think ask is the key word there.
Yep.
So, all right, good luck.
Thank you.
Nothing.
I think Steve will be here if he waits that long.
No, 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 before, before elections.
I'll be there then.
Before elections. Mid-March, I think, would be good timing.
Yeah. See, I see if we can get him out. I think I know the answer though.
Wendy?
Uh-uh.
Upcoming meetings, February 9th. It's a full agenda already. We've got Gene Sheridan, Athletic Director, Jill Tosti.
Mr. Schaefer.
Mrs. Braverman.
Mrs. Braverman.
Is that for a request on something or an update?